Good evening, colleagues. I'm Nina Trantaisinconas Laturen. Guam is back from recess. We are now on the agenda at the extension of remarks. And at this time, I will address Assistant Majority Leader Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. You are recognized.
Sainmaasi Maskehalu. It has been a productive term and a productive session. We have had to face what no legislature in our island's history has had to face. The last global pandemic for our island was during the Spanish administration, decades before a Guam legislature was in place. We've had closure for war claims for our manamko, who have been unjustly kept waiting 74 years. We have overcome the Department of Justice's challenge to the CLT, the Tomorrow Land Trust, and have actually made it stronger and better and more able to live up to its intentions. We have applied to the Unrepresented Nations and Peoples Organization to help advocate for our rights, which are too often silenced, ignored, or considered less than others. Our Commission on Decolonization has completed studies so that going forward, we may educate ourselves and others about what our future could look like. We have found many ways to support our business community and help our economy re-envision itself, not the least of which will be by uplifting and strengthening our region through working together. We have potentially saved lives in an unprecedented fashion, expanding our early voting system to reduce the number of people voting on any given day. We have made significant process, excuse me, we have made significant progress to developing policy recommendations as to how to protect our local and tomorrow intellectual property rights through developing a local trademark program. We've carried out many measures to make our island's future more sustainable, including by updating the principles of our decades-old comprehensive development plan and calling to protect for our marine resources from active Navy sonar, as is carried out those protections in other testing and training areas. We have made progress on tackling illegal dumping through the work of the Island Beautification Task Force and creating awareness about our rip current in hiking hazards. It is my hope that in the next year or so, we will begin to see more consistent safety signage and new awareness programs to safeguard our community from those very hazards. We have added the term "maga haga" into the government lexicon. And this session, we did exactly what I had mentioned previously that we are here to do. Throughout the fiscal year, we located real money to appropriate to an agency in need. We heard from GBB and BBMR that tourism is not meeting projections and that special funds are underperforming despite receiving over 1.6 billion in federal assistance. A budget is not one and done. I am grateful to the Speaker and the Oversight Chair on Health and this body for all of their diligence in continuing to find monies for our healthcare system and other critical needs. I hope that more of these types of opportunities make themselves available so that the legislature can continue carrying out its work alongside the governor. I thank all my colleagues for which I have had the pleasure of co-sponsoring legislation, which with each and every one of them, you know, I thought about that. It's, I think it's really remarkable. I think we have all co-sponsored legislation together, and that's really important that we've done so. It has indeed been a productive term and a productive session. So happy holidays to all. And may 2021 exceed 2020.
Sizus Maasi, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. At this time, I will acknowledge Senator Regina Bisco, the Committee on Rules Chair. You are recognized.
Undankluna Sizus Maasi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity and for your leadership and your heart. It's really hard to find the exact right words for this moment. I'm grateful, of course, for my family's support throughout my life. I wouldn't be here without my parents and my amazing extended family. I wouldn't be here if my partner in life and love wasn't such a pillar of strength and I just wanted to wish a happy belated anniversary to Andy Lee. I couldn't do this job without my siblings, my in-laws, my cousins, my mulleys, my parties, and of course, my two daughters, Mia and Nina Lee, for their sacrifice and their support and everyone who lent their time and their energy to this work. Because that's what we do here. We work and we work hard. Oftentimes, it's tough, it's very challenging, and sometimes it's thankless. Believe me, in these past few months, this truth has been made more than clear. But none of us can allow ourselves to see opposition as enemies. No, we are public servants. Keeping an open heart and an open mind, approaching those who disagree with humility, working to build consensus even if it means compromising, these are all strengths in this body. And it is required if we're going to make tough policy calls and if we're really interested in enacting change. Madam Speaker and colleagues, my way or the highway is a very lonely road. It can grab headlines, sure. Being the loyal opposition will get someone more votes, maybe more business opportunities, maybe more popularity. But we are a deliberative body. And one sole vote, even one out of reliable opposition, will get nothing done, at least not in these halls. And I'm so proud that over the course of my two terms in the Guam Legislature, I have reached out to every single one of my colleagues. I have worked with them on measures and I've made it a point to co-sponsor bills with every single member, both in the 34th and the 35th. And that's why I'm in awe every single day that I come here and see the dedication to true public service in our legislative branch of government. My fellow lawmakers and our teams, the unsung heroes in central operations who make everything that we do possible. We all work around the clock making tough sacrifices in the name of the greater good in recognition of this supreme commitment that all of us have made to our island and our people and doing so together. As the Bible says, "We reap what we sow." And I know that over the course of these last four years, it has sometimes seemed so tough to see if we were reaping any benefits to all of the days that we toiled on bills, on public hearings, days in session. But Saint Paul also said in his letter to the Galatians that "The one who sows for the Spirit will reap eternal life from the Spirit. Let us not grow tired of doing good; for in due time we shall reap our harvest if we do not give up." Madam Speaker, I am proud to have served among so many people who do not grow tired of doing good, who do not give up when our proverbial land looks barren; for we have faith that we will reap the good that we have sown. This term, we have been able to raise the minimum wage, modernize workers' compensation for the first time in 30 years, create a new adult-use cannabis industry, authorize direct aid programs for the ongoing pandemic, extend and expand tax breaks for small businesses, and protect our cultural and environmental resources. Undankluna Sizus Maasi, colleagues, for your willingness to work together to make these things happen. I count it as an honor, truly, to be able to work alongside each and every one of you. Proof that no matter our differences in politics, personality, gender, or generation, we can always find a common cause for the common good. By any measure, this body has dedicated itself to doing right by our people. And that is also a testament to the countless students, parents, businesses, community groups, advocates, activists, government experts, and our manamko that have come before us to advocate for the causes that are important to them, to tell us how to implement our desired policies without causing them harm and to find middle ground. That's one of the most beautiful things about Guam, that our tight-knit island empowers every individual to change this special place for the better. I encourage our residents to serve Guam however you can. Run for elected office. Take part in peaceful protests. Testify at public hearings. Get your family and friends involved. Be an agent of positive change. Madam Speaker and colleagues, I know that no matter what the future holds, that I'll continue to give back to the island that has given me so much. And I will raise my daughters to do the same. Because none of us knows what the next chapter will bring. And 2020 should have taught us this, sometimes a very difficult lesson. Life is precious. It isn't guaranteed. And we aren't entitled to any amount of time with the ones we love, the ones that love us. So even with some of the uncertainty that lies ahead, I am so, so grateful for my incredibly hard-working and dedicated team. I know that tonight, I'm gonna hug my daughters and my lovely husband extra tight. And I know that in the weeks ahead, I'm really looking forward to being with my girls, to teach them, to be inspired by them. And I'm gonna take some time to reflect on these past four years, time that will only grow the gratitude that I feel to all of you here in this hall who have rallied a consensus, built a collective trust, to the ones who contributed the good deeds this office has been able to do these two terms, and for the thousands of our people who trusted me with this awesome responsibility. I will be forever grateful. Putita, undankluna Sizus Maasi.
Ben Puvetsu, Senator Regina Bisco Lee. Next, colleagues, I will recognize Senator Luis Munya.
Sainmaasi, Madam Speaker. I hope I'm not breaking any rules by acknowledging each of our colleagues here. I just wanted to say a little quick acknowledgement and thank you to them, each and every one of them. And I hope it's relevant because, still, because I wrote this like three sessions ago. Madam Speaker, I wish I had a wireless mic. I might speak a lot better. Madam Speaker, you and I have a history together. And now I'm grateful that I have this chapter to add to our relationship. I'm sure our dads are very proud of us. They are together watching over us. Sizus un benedisi, zan sinanamo antian, zan ifamiliamu, zehu polu hamzugi minaleki nakanaia. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Therese Turlahi, prior to us being colleagues, we were parent partners. And as our daughters were classmates, we sort of grew up together. I learned so much about passion for being a policymaker from you. I thank you for your dedication to making great laws that govern the people of Guam. I look forward to the next chapter in our lives and how it will connect us again. Senator Kelly, you have displayed a great love to our island, our people, and our culture. I admire that and can and will learn from your love. Thank you for your service. Senator Jim, thank you for staying. It was a pleasure working with you in this hall. And I like the fact that we can communicate on a professional level and still be able to put it aside socially. You and I have much in common. Good luck in all your endeavors and don't forget me when you become famous. Senator Sabina, two years was not enough time for me to get to know you. If there's one regret that I do have, it's that I didn't really get a chance to sit with you and talk about everything. I thank you for your service, Senator Sabina. Senator Amanda, you possess similar characteristics as my daughter. First, you have the same name. And every time I call on you, I think of her. Second, you are both intelligent. When I watch you, I'm also very proud of you, just as I am of her. You can call me mom anytime. Senator Pito Sunita, it has been my honor to serve with you as your neighboring colleague here. I will miss you. I have the utmost respect for you and I wish you and your wife flow much health and happiness. Senator Mary, I wish you and your family well. Our families have been connected in so many ways. My uncle and your brother are the best of friends. I've worked with your other brother in many capacities in the nonprofit world. Your mom is one of the most beautiful women I've ever met. I hope one day, when my children start having children, that I may be as beautiful a grandmother as you. Senator Regina, we both bid farewell to these halls, but I imagine that I haven't seen the last of you here. And same as for myself. I wish you, Andy, and the beautiful young ladies you are both raising all the best that life can offer. Senator Talina, your devotion and commitment to serving God and the people is so inspiring to me and to the people of Guam. Keep fighting the good fight. God is on your side. Senator Joe, guider dun, wrap this up and hun gam pu fa boi. Senator, I admire your ability to remain focused and steadfast in a committee that is not the easiest to chair, to your amazing staff, your family, your beautiful wife, and yourself. God bless you and thank you for your service in so many ways. Senator Clint, once coworkers in the media world and now colleagues in the political world, you have heart. It's what makes you a good public servant. Keep pushing forward and many blessings for your growing family. When the world turns again, I'll be looking forward to seeing you and possibly working with you again in the future. Senator Tello, my sister in music, you said it yourself, it's an unbreakable bond. We have a melodic understanding of each other. We are emotionally driven people and that's what makes us good public servants. I love you and I thank you for your support and most especially, your friendship. Senator Will, you probably thought I forgot you. But knowing you, you knew I'd save you for last. Now oftentimes, I tell people that I blame you for reeling me into this arena, just like you tell people a lot of things about me. But in actuality, I'm very grateful to you for teaching me the possibility of going beyond the horizons to what we can accomplish if we dream big and have the support of the family and friends to serve the people. You are a wonderful public servant and I'm very proud to call you my friend and partner. I love you. And finally, to the legislative staff, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you have done, not just for everyone, but especially for me. You are exemplary and deserve so much acknowledgement. Oftentimes, I tend to forget to show my gratitude. But just know that no matter where my future lies, I will always remember everything you have done for me. If one day my future path leads me back here, I hope you are still here because no one can replace your devotion and commitment to helping us serve the people of Guam. Sizus Maasi, hamzutodus, zen biva anyuwebu, uguai zahau. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Munya. Sizus Maasi. Senator Will Castro, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, just about 10 minutes ago, the hall was filled with a lot of joy, jolly laughter. Knowing my personality, I tend to lean on the side of being happy and positive after my colleagues' deep remarks in a reality and somberness sets in. Madam Speaker, colleagues, it has been the utmost privilege to serve alongside you. Certainly was. I'm grateful and deeply humbled to have earned the trust and confidence of our electorate to be given the opportunity to serve the people of Guam as their senator in the 34th and 35th Guam legislatures. Donklu nar agradece mentu, puti onumu, numina tsine na ba hu set bi hamzu, minyautau Guam. Tremendous gratitude for the strength to serve the people of Guam. It is with heartfelt appreciation that I prepared to leave this distinguished body. It's an appreciation and acknowledgement of the love and support of my colleagues and the people of Guam during these four years of elected service. It is appropriate to share in my final address as I reflect on our experiences, my gratitude for the shared laughs and the smiles in times of triumph, even the tears in times of distress, sorrow, and great pain. It is important for the people we love so much, those who are watching, those on social media, those that we meet in social gatherings. It is important for the people of Guam to know that we, the Guam Legislature, are a united front when it comes to embracing and practicing and defending this democracy of ours, when it comes to protecting the lives of our people. Let there be no doubt in anyone's mind despite our differences in party and philosophy and beliefs, that despite our very different backgrounds and value systems that we always rise and are in unison to defend and advance this community. That much I've surmised in my timeless service with you. Further and with that said, thank you. Thank you to the champions in this hall for allowing me the privilege to work with you on important measures. It was the privilege of my lifetime to have worked with champions of healthcare, commerce and industry, education, youth, and a manamko, champions dedicated to lifting up the less fortunate. Sizus Maasi, loqui, to those who stand firmly for the preservation and advancement of our indigeneity as tomorus of the Marianas and of all islanders whose storied heritage is of a proud and resilient people. To every single one of you in here, thank you for being champions of our human rights. Looking back, my team and I have been so blessed to earn your support on a variety of measures. As two examples, from the 34th, a measure that empowered coastal cities such as the Marine Conservation Act. And in the 35th, thank you, colleagues, for the passage of the Homeland Security Modernization Act to protect all those who may Guam their home. To the ruling majority, it was my privilege to have been asked to co-sponsor and champion measures such as Bill 181 on war claims or progressive measures that empower institutions like the University of Guam and Charter Schools. And to my colleagues in the minority caucus, it's been the experience of a lifetime as well with you to have met some of the most extraordinary people in the country and from the region, U.S. federal agency secretaries and deputy secretaries, governors, senators, ambassadors, and other dignitaries from foreign states, from sovereign states throughout Oceana. Special thanks are extended to the leaders of our region and right here on Guam for the blessings of participating in historical initiatives such as the Marianas Working Group and in addressing other issues of mutual concern and benefit. To the men and women who have served before me in this capacity, in whose shoes I have walked some of the way. It was in watching you and wanting to serve in your likeness I've come to accept that at the end of the day, at the end of one's service in elected leadership, it comes down to the positive impact that you, that we have made in the lives of individuals and the life of our community that matters the most. Thank you. Thank you for being a leadership template for me. Put Guam for me, I've always maintained that it's never been merely the title but the light, the positive light, that I was blessed to be able to shine upon this island we love so very much. Since the day I was inaugurated, I've asked myself, how best can I light the path of one's way? How best may I light the way of this great Tomorrow Nation? Last and most importantly, to you, the people of Guam, thank you for the privilege of serving of one of your 15 senators, to have had the privilege to be active and engaged with you in public hearings, at town hall meetings, at site visits, with you and your village or for some of you out there under the canopy of the mobile office or at your invitation, gi kusina nhat san hidzum. Thank you, thank you so very much. Madam Speaker and colleagues, in closing, this is my last address in the Guam Legislature. As a senator, this term extending from the last. And to dedicate this extension of remarks, my deepest gratitude in the house of the people. And with that said, it is my privilege to state the following for the record. My name is Will Castro. I'm the son of a retired customs officer and a full-time homemaker. With a modest upbringing in the wonderful community of Baragada, a village in the center of our island paradise, I thank you, each and every one of you serving today in this hall, senators and staff, volunteers, and my team at the office and on the campaign for the masterclass on leadership and humility and in finding one's purpose. To my family, all those who blessed me with the privilege to serve as your senator, Sizus Maasi, to you near and far, my heart and soul thanks you for the tremendous privilege to be an elected representative to the Guam Legislature with the honor of him be of being an ambassador of our community. May God be with you and your family today, this holiday season and the time of Christ and every day hereafter. God bless Guam and our Marianas. Peace and prosperity to you all. Sainmaasi.
Anyone else wishing to do extension of remarks? Please raise your hand at this time. Senator Mary Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We are now two days shy of Itinilai Kanisaken, zen iminagof anyuwebu, the New Year 2021. This term began with much notoriety with our partisan supermajority and our female gender supermajority. The composition of this body was unprecedented. And similarly, with the pandemic consuming nearly half of our term, so too was our lawmaking experience unprecedented. But we persevered with all good intentions. As we end this session, I wish to recognize my colleagues who will be closing a chapter of distinguished service with the 35th Guam Legislature. Senator Will Castro, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, Senator Luis Munya, and Senator Regina Bisco Lee. Some of you, I've had the privilege of crafting and co-sponsoring meaningful legislation. For others, my privilege has been witnessing your passion and fight for what you believed in. I recognize Senator Will Castro for his dedication to Guam's veterans and hope for improvement of our political status. I admire Senator Marsh Titino's commitment to persevere, preserve and revitalize our heritage. I appreciate Senator Munya for her focus on our island's access to healthcare and health screening. But Madam Speaker, I will most especially miss the courage and conviction of Senator Regina Bisco Lee. Though I applaud her ability to put politics aside and fully attend to her amazing daughters, Senator Lee's decided departure from this legislature will come at a great loss to our people. In just two terms, this lawmaker significantly changed our laws to better protect our environment, to keep our children safe, and to dignify the conditions of Guam's working population. When we were not conferring on policy issues during sessions, we were sharing heartwarming anecdotes about our families or we were attempting to decipher gnarly comments made on the floor in good humor. She is a good neighbor. I'm glad to have had the opportunity to get to know her and many others on this floor, and she will continue to be a cherished confidant and friend over the years. But Madam Speaker, no matter how often any of us interacted and no matter what disagreements may come our way, my memory will be that each of these members desired to build a better Guam. They spoke truth to power and sought to protect the public we mutually serve. I reflect as we go into the new year, a saying that "Great is the art of beginning, but even greater is the art of ending." And so with this farewell to the 35th legislative term, I congratulate all of my colleagues for completing the great art of ending. And I wish those that will not be here in the 36th the very best as they embark on the next art of their new beginning. It is my prayer that all that we have experienced in this pandemic year enlighten and empower us in better days ahead. And to you, Madam Speaker, undankulu na Sizus Maasi for inviting me to offer the opening prayers at our sessions and undankulu na Sizus Maasi for always keeping the faith with any circumstance that arose on this floor. Saying prayers was a privilege that I took to heart. And so in closing, I just want to offer this final prayer as we end this legislative term. Amen.
Amen.
Sizus Maasi, colleagues, for everything. I'm dearly grateful to have worked with you in the 35th and I wish for continued good policy and measures that will benefit our island going into the new year and the new term. Sizus Maasi.
Thank you very much, Senator Torres. Anyone else on extension of remarks? Senator Otito Terlay, pu fobot konsege amana.
Sizus Maasi, Madam Speaker. Donkulu na Sizus Maasi pa sidbi xomo. Donkulu na Sizus Maasi pa iputina da ni nayu ni sti na hora pa bai sangan hafa malago para kulantegi manadispedit. Antisibaitu tuhun hafa pa bai sangan. Malagozo na bainayi todudu Hamzu. Ni katotsi na membru, ni manhita para estiros hamus na tempo. Undankulu na Sizus Maasi. Ta tungua na dikada guaha ta diskuti pu hafa ta tugi gi papetka se gi gi jotabius ta tungua na guaha timan akumpindi. Lo yutumuni dia gaiga gi kurasonta na mana guajza i todu. Za donkulu na Sizus Maasi pa minalek chetsumidzu. Sigundo malagozo na bainayi donkulu na Sizus Maasi para ta utauta ni man manayi todu ni kompianzania para ta sebisha pa tanan lamoli ki nilalata. Gwinigi tanauta. Ta bainayi donkulu na Sizus Maasi todu manamku ni umaga ngo za manayu undankulu na Sizus Maasi para edzu ni insurance ni tanaguaha mas insurance ni pomaatzi. Undankulu na Sizus Maasi guajza nzu manamku. Esti gi egan legne si flowgi za guau. Hafa pitu para ntugi para unsangan gi finakpu esti zen midu session. Liku untungua ambi untungua sa guau na tigozo na ipa bai fangi. Edzu malago in hafa pa bai sangan. Bai sangan gi nikurasunu. Bai sangan gi neyeningeku. Bai sangan gi gwinajaku. Pu todudu she isinidu ni mana aliam karasession. Za guaha na biohina za gin ta diskuti. Hafa tinigeta para ta presenta para minaleki ta utauta. Ti todu tempo maparewi na sota. Divisyon pu divisyon pu divisyon. Lo yutumuni dia sinaha guaha i timan akumpindi. Lo gaigi gi na sota na tasapoti zu na tinigi pa ti tasapoti zu na tinigi. Gaiga galumi na sota na ta chochugu zu ta sasangan sa jigi neyengeeta pa tanan lamoli inilalata. Za esti abai sangan na kin todu na imatu gi efesina ma faesinu ko pun tugi hafa para bong sangan. Hafana pa bai tugi hafana biusangan pa bai sangan para Hamzutodus gwinii. Tinisisari na bai fangi maoli xian na tinigi. Pa bai kiunvin xiam zu na ungan sina zu bangi. Sa todu bai sangan gwinigi yutumun esti na sidbi sota gi ni nikurasunu. Tudi sisita tumugi. Zongan donkulu na Sizus Maasi si Senator Senagustinsa humami na dos in setbi i publiku gi minagahit. Iminagahit na sidbi xiu. Za sta pa gu. Za sta pa gu gaiga gi inaguaja maamidza si zoksa mafana guam. Umafana guam tai manu para bai setbi para bai setbi she ta utauta ni minagahit na hinasu. Za utungua, Madam Speaker, utungua na guaha gwinii disparansio winaguaja. Lo yutumuni dia gaiga na mana mana faktze mana faktze inilasu. Za esti bai sangan na guaha na biohina guaha na baino hasu na pu guahu na kulanguahu gi finengli tera, "I am the missing link." Lo esti bai sangan i daptu. Dialuza bai sangan. Na itinigo itinigo midu pa gu malefako pu sidbi xun tautu. Za donkulu na Sizus Maasi amdu talu torus. Isubinau si turis. Sa bai sangana na masia guaha na timan akumpindi gwinii. Lo todu tempo ugakakau esti hulu isainata para protehi za po guadei mo na hafa shina ta chochugu pa tanan lamoli inilalata gwinigi tanauta. Undankulu na Sizus Maasi amdu torus. Thank you very much. Za Sizus ubindisi toru. Sizus Maasi.
Sizus Maasi, buan pu betsu, Senator Otito. Anyone else on extension of remarks? Senator Teresa Terlay, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd like to thank my colleagues for very beautiful remarks today. And I'm very heartfelt and very appreciative of them. Sizus Maasi. And I want to offer, you know, before I begin, my sincerest prayers for healing, peace, continuous strength to the families who've lost loved ones this year, to those who've suffered physically, financially, overall wellness due to this pandemic, and to our people who are continuing to struggle to stay afloat because of the economic impact of this pandemic and its associated impacts. As I reflect on this legislative term, the actions that we've taken as, you know, by this body and the lessons we've learned, I'm certain that as we move forward into the new year and into the 36th Guam Legislature, we must continue to do so with a sincerity of purpose for the welfare of the people and true collaboration. And I've been watching The Mandalorian, and so I want to say, that is the way. That is the only way to move forward, Madam Speaker. And this term has highlighted for me more than ever the power of the government to impact the lives of the people in a good or a bad way and our responsibility to genuinely debate in here and pass laws that prioritize their welfare and how a lack of transparency will undermine trust and correspondingly impede our efforts and the efforts of all those who are fighting for us during this pandemic and every day. Transparency will continue to evade us as a legislature and as a government if we do not stand for, vote, and advocate for more, not less scrutiny by the public. And I'd like to thank my team at this time, at the end of the year, for their unwavering work. Tremendous, excellent work. And I would like to thank my colleagues, of course, for their unwavering work and their work to ensure that we conduct unprecedented oversight despite tremendous amount of work on bills, to make legislation better, to scrutinize nominations, to defend against raids on our land trust, to prevent further harm to our cultural and natural resources. We must move legislation that is truly to help our people pick up the pieces of their lives. We must carefully weigh the impact to ensure that it will, in fact, improve economic security, safety, and access to critical healthcare and other critical services for our people. We must be critical about proposed legislation that will only serve a few in our community and negatively impact the rest, even if it means being subjected to criticism and politically unpopular. And I really want to say sincerely to my colleagues who leave us this term that it has been my honor to stand with you for the people of Guam and in the spirit of our ancestors. And I see that in each of you. And I am very, very grateful and moved and inspired. Sizus Maasi. I want to express my deepest gratitude to all those at the front lines of the healthcare crisis. And I'm grateful for their unwavering perseverance even through these holidays and their efforts to reduce suffering and provide the best patient care possible at this time. It has been such a deeply lonely and challenging year for many on Guam and at a time when our divisions have been visible and things so uncertain. And yet, despite all of that, our people have shown that our bonds can root deeper. And I want to thank all of them for every act of kindness, great or small, that they have offered to their neighbors, to those in need during this time despite the challenges that they personally face. And I want to commend them for their voices, for speaking up, to always hold leaders accountable and to express their need of this government to work in their best interest. This true spirit of community has been displayed in so many ways over the past year by our people. And this offers all of us reason for hope and inspiration as we enter 2020. Sizus Maasi to all my colleagues for the great honor it has been. Sizus Maasi.
Buan pu betsu, Senator Terlay. Anyone else? If not, Vice Speaker, can you please take the podium?
Speaker Barnes, you are recognized.
Sizus Maasi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on extension of remarks. And I just want to say, undankulu na Sizus Maasi, to all my colleagues here. Looking back at this term, I must admit that this was one of my hardest terms in the legislature, being here seven terms already. But I did not want to miss the opportunity to reflect on the lessons which I have learned. To Senator Regina Bisco Lee, from your days as my chief of staff, I witnessed your dedication, determination, drive, and love for your family always was the center of your mission. When faced with challenges, you stepped up and you overcame. Undankulu na Sizus Maasi for all that you've done, and God bless you. To Senator Will, from the good old days of the old legislative building, your dedication to our youth and our region really made me realize the potential that if we can only come together, we are stronger. I want to say thank you. He stood by my side when we worked on war claims. When times got tough, he stayed true to your word. And you helped me overcome the obstacles together along with Senator Amanda Shelton. During your time as minority leader, you were always a respectful partner, not an adversary to me. We may have disagreed, but if there's one thing I could say, we did agree to respect each other. Sizus Maasi. To my co-chair, Senator Kelly, your passion for our community and our people, you brought a new perspective into this branch. You were my co-chair, but you made it clear that you would disagree on principle and not on politics. Undankulu na Sizus Maasi for always advocating for our culture, our heritage, and our people. Sizus Maasi. Senator Luis, my prima, my kuniao, and the other Munya, your commitment to serve the island's vulnerable children truly exemplifies what public service is all about. You go out of your way in your free time, on your weekends, to put a smile on the faces of our island's children. You worked so hard for those who were truly suffering from cancer. Every time when I look down on the floor, I see you quiet at times but laser-focused on your mission. I was proud to be by your side when we made good to Guam Cancer Care. Thank you so very much. To our Sergeant of Arms, Mr. Tom Unshuk, truly a legend in this halls, undankulu na Sizus Maasi for sharing this journey with me. And congratulations on your retirement. We will truly miss you. And at this time, colleagues, I don't think we've ever had a Sergeant of Arms stay this long to have the time to retire. So if we can give him a round of applause and stand up. To each of my colleagues you here, I am eager to continue to work together with you as we work to bring our island over this hurdle. This new year, I challenge each- This New Year, I challenge each of you, and I want each of you to hold me accountable to this challenge. We cannot let our personal differences come between us. We owe it to our people, and let's make them proud of us. Madam Speaker, undankulu na zuzus maasi for giving me this opportunity to speak, to wish our senators who will be leaving us, bid them a farewell, safe journey to their new chapter, but most especially, God bless each and every one of them and their families, and thank their families also for giving you the opportunity to serve our people also. Zuzus ubini dici. Zuzus ubini dici hamzus, sanamasi. And thank you for allowing me to be your speaker. God bless. Colleagues, if I may, I just want to take a moment's recess. Imina Trentai Cinco Nazales Latu in Guahan is back from recess. Majority Leader, Vice Speaker Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn today's session subject to call of the speaker.
On that motion, are there any objections? On the motion to adjourn subject to the call of the speaker, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Good night, colleagues. Have a great one.